Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council members. We'll open the evening this evening, as advertised, with a public hearing to consider the -- to receive public comment on adjusted FY18 and the proposed fiscal year 19 budget for the town of North Beach. Joe, you want to hit the highlights?
Yes, I'd like to start with the FY18 budget. And there's -- marked in yellow is the changes that we're making. Okay, and these aren't major changes on the general fund. So you'll see increases to revenue on page one. There's just small things like credit card, the solar credits we get for public works billing us as the first year we received those, charge point revenue for the new electric charging station, and then there's an item for miscellaneous reimbursements, which includes things from like the workman's comp. We got a certificate of award, I think it was $2,100 refund for our policy if we not have any claims in the last five years. Legit had sent us a refund for a significant amount, and all these items are reflected in there, in that 19. Cell tower revenue went up because there was a third amendment for T-Mobile agreement, which increased the use area on the tower, for the water tower, which increased the revenue by $6,000. Then hotel tax, combined with art enforcement and the new licensing and some new vacation rentals, we've increased, have been able to bump that up to 8,000. And then the gaming and for gambling, I project that will be $290,000 at the end of this year instead of $225,000. The -- on page two, the only item on this page is the removal of any indication of revenue for the dragon boat races, remove that to zero. That's that, on that page. I'm trying to flip this as I go. I'm sorry. Can you flip that? The, um, page four, page four, the only item on page four is the engineering and zoning, which covers Brick's Hour, we're asking for an increase from 12,000 up to 18,500, because our actuals are going to hit that this year. You had John Hoffman leaving, then you had Rick coming in, and there's been some changes to the zoning, and quite a bit of training, so it just bumps up really. The other items are, let me tell you the page numbers, because general fund is really quick. On page seven, you have page seven, there's, we had street signs, we had 7,500 in that line item, but we actually need 10,500 in that item, so we had to increase that. And the last on the general fund is page eight, and this is great news to be done. We had a contingency reserve of zero when we adopted the budget in 2018. With the changes we've made here and comparing actual expenses and revenues, we look at an $81,000 reserve for FY18 possibly. Okay? So that's for the general fund. On page nine is the sewer fund. This is where it gets a little more meaty, because we had talked about the close from Chesapeake Beach to the wastewater treatment plant and that excessive bill we received. So I had to bump it up, this wastewater treatment plant operation cost, you'll see that item is $333,000 from $243,000. And then there was an ENR capital item. We had anticipated in the budget, we received it was $38,000, but we received billing for $99,000. Okay? So with that said, there's no changes to the fees or rates for the sewer water for FY18, so that means we have to pull from the reserves. So at the top of the page, you'll see sewer reserves pulled for that to compensate for the items. And this is just projected to the end of June. The last page, page 10, we don't have any changes, which represents the water fund, there's no changes there. On page 11 represents your capital items. And these are all the items that you have either spoken about throughout the year, approved, Donnie's reported on, and you just haven't made budget adjustments to put, placed them in the budget when you're aware of these items. And in the yellow, you will see what they are. There's a $6,000 grant from the Arcs Council, Calvert County, for the park, for the gate. And then I had to increase the MLGIP reserve to the capital fund to cover costs for the items listed at the bottom in yellow, which you had some additional work done to the nice street dyke, which was 17,000, and you had living shoreline additional work done there, that was 40,000. And you had $8,500, it was for cameras, in our FY17 budget, but that wasn't used because the pier wasn't completed at the end of 17 when we were getting the cameras in place for Sunrise Gardens and Welcome Center. So I'm proposing that, since you didn't spend it in FY17, that maybe this year, at the end of the year, you can do the cameras at the end of the pier like we were supposed to. And then the dredge project exceeded what we had anticipated from 204 to 228. And the Calis Park renovation, we anticipated at 127, but that's $170,000 in cost. And if anybody's been to the park, you'll see all the improvements, but we'll get to that later in the meeting, and you'll actually see the results of this. And then we have the t-shirt shack, which cost was 16,500. And elevated walkways, we had to spend some money with some costs related to that to prepare ramps and whatnot, $5,500. And live area is $7,000 for some behind the area work, like legal and engineering and things like that. So those are your capital items for FY18 with the adjustments. And then on page 12 is the EDC, and there are no proposed adjustments for FY18 for EDC. So in a nutshell, that is your FY18 adjustments.
Joe, the grant that we just, the program Open Space, the grant that we just awarded, $80,000, is that?
Seventy thousand.
Yeah, is that factored in?
This is not, this is not reflected in here, because we just received the award last week, and you won't be able to draw on that money to FY19. And it's so new that it's not even reflected in your post, it'll have to be adjusted during FY19. But that's the thing.
Did you send an email to the council?
No, I sent it to you, yeah.
We were awarded, um, the ENR program Open Space, $70,000 to playground, community playgrounds. That's the, that's the, 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 the council. Okay, that's great. Don't worry. I'm going to take them.
Okay, go ahead. Presentation, I love it. All right, shall we move on to FY19, the highlights?
Yes.
Okay. The FY19 budget is based on the current property tax rate of .6329 for assessed hundred, and the real property tax base for the constant yield year is 245 million. The county gave us a differential of 33 cents for this year, and we appreciate that very much. The refuse collection for this year is increasing from $295 per household to $327,000 per household. And the last time you've seen any increase to this fee was June of 2014. Local tax and other were, is based on the state audit boundaries. And highway user fees, you'll see that that has increased totally to $101,000 for the new year, and that'll be in effect until 2020. The rental license includes a proposal of increasing the fee from $150 for a three-year period to $250. And then we have an increase to the gaming and electronic machine revenue to $310,000 over prior years. Beach fees, there's no changes to beach fees for out-of-county residents. Shirt shack, we had estimated sales, it would use one-third of that. The dragon boat races, we've already discussed that there's no revenue from the dragon boat races. Town council salaries, $3,000 per year. Admin salaries, there's a 2% coal raise for admin, public works, and code enforcement. And again, there's an increase to the licensed inspection and code salaries due to a portion of salary being under the planning and zoning, but also for a part-time code officer during our season, which has increased the hours, the demand for that has had an increase in hours. And we have a new code enforcement software package, and the annual fee for that is 6,000, that's a new fee which we haven't had in the past. And then we have a new website notification system, which you guys might have seen, the text messaging and emails for that. And that notification system is $2,500 plus the $1,800 for the website. There is contributions in this year's budget for FY19 that include, there's $2,500 miscellaneous, which covers some of the Abigail's functions, some other miscellaneous donations we do through Northern High School and various organizations like that. But the main two are, there's $6,000 for the North Beach volunteer fire department, and $5,000 for Calvert Memorial Hospital over five years for their new facilities. There is an increase to the annual maintenance agreement to flare beds, which you've seen that. And then American and Bloom, there's detail for American and Bloom, because the planning on Bay Avenue, spring and summer, then fall this year. So you'll see that increase in those costs. Beach patrol wages, you're looking at an increase from $9.25 in minimum wage to $10.10. Resident deputies service, that went up $20,000, and that's reflected in your FY19. Water and sewer, there's no rate increase to water and sewer. The only change to water and sewer is we're reducing the 10,000 gallon minimum to an 8,000 gallon minimum, which helps the town stay in line with the conservation plan they had agreed to this prior year. So basically, that's it in a nutshell for your FY18. This is our third time.
This has been posted online?
Yes, it has.
Okay, the floor is open for public comment on the proposed FY19 budget. It's your money. Okay, hearing no comment, I'll close the public hearing.
Are we getting a chance to talk a little bit more about the few items, or is this, should we?
This just closes the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to introduce the order that's later, we can talk about. Okay? All right, so we'll call now the town council meeting to order. At the end of May 10th, we'll begin with our pledge of allegiance. Uh, let's see, former gene, it's nice to see you here. Why don't you lead us now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Station, you're called, Walter.
Taylor Fraser.
Here.
Mr. Beden.
Here.
Ms. Hayden.
Here.
Mr. McEnamal.
Here.
Mr. Randy Hall.
Here.
Ms. Shaeta.
Here.
All right, we have an addition to the agenda, under-scheduled appointments. We have some representatives from the North Beach Garden Club who wish to recognize the winners of the May Day baskets. Maybe we'll make that item be under-scheduled appointments. With that addition, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And a motion to approve the minutes from the town council meeting in April.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carried. Now motion to approve the minutes from the work session last week.
So move.
Second, discussion? All right. That motion is passed. Okay, now under-scheduled appointments. Um, I'll tell you what. Is Julie here? Oh, yeah. Hi. Julie, uh, tell us, this is a presentation, while you can read that, it's from your management plan for the county's comprehensive solid waste. We were approached by Julie to ask for the opportunity to present this to the council and to the public, so this is your opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And citizens of North Beach, as he thanks the mayor of Metro Miami, Julie Buda, I'm the deputy director for enterprise funds for Calvert County that encompasses the public water and sewer and the solid waste. With me tonight, if you please stand, is the division chief for solid waste, Mike Thomas, and the recycling coordinator, Bill Teeter.
Mike, Bill, nice to have you with us this evening.
The purpose of us requesting to come in front of you today is to brief, to brief you and the citizens of North Beach on the 10-year update to the solid waste management plan as required by the Department, the Maryland Department of the Environment. Briefly, I'm going to go through the four, the regulations, the current regulations, and I'm not going to go through all of them. There are many, many regulations, but I'll touch upon some that are, I'm going to summarize chapters one through four, summarize chapter five, I have such, we have chapter five, stand alone, because that's really the, um, the props of what we're here for tonight. I'm going to summarize changes, talk about our next steps as, for the county, and open it up for questions, and open the session. Just to backtrack a little bit, so North Beach has elected to follow the comprehensive plan of Calvert County. So that is the purpose of tonight, is to inform you what we will be presenting to the Maryland Department of the Environment. There is, you should have a complete packet of the plan, and we welcome comments by the end of May. We introduced ourselves, the director for public works is Rai Sharma, so he extends his, um, his, his hellos to you. And also, we had, um, we had a consultant working with us on this project as well. Cohort Title 26, Department of the Environment, subtitle three, chapter three, is really where the majority of the rules, regulations surrounding solid waste and recycling for the state of Maryland are encompassed. Section five of chapter three states a plan shall be revised if necessary by the department. It should be reviewed in its entirety at three separate intervals, two-year review, a three-year amendment, and a 10-year update. Right now, we're in the tent, we're about to finish our last 10-year update and adopt our next 10 years. Revised to include the installation, also needs to be revised if it includes the installation or extension of either a solid waste acceptance facility or a solid waste disposal system before the issuance of a permit. Now for a summary of chapters one through five of the comprehensive solid waste management plan update. Chapter one was developed, developed the overarching goal for the county, which is to maintain a well-managed and effective solid waste and recyclable management, materials management system in Calvert County. From this goal, five objectives were developed. And just to briefly read them, protect public health and safety and preserve the natural environment, implement and maintain programs that promote source production, material reuse, and recycling over disposal, three, to ensure cost-effective and sustainable municipal solid waste and recycle management services for residential and commercial customers, ensure adequate facilities and infrastructure to accommodate current and future residential and commercial MSW, which is municipal solid waste and recyclables. And objective five, to collectively plan future initiatives to the greatest extent possible with internal county departments and regional county jurisdictions, councils, and other potential partnerships. We understand that you have curbside collection here, but that, how that fits into the overall, overall process, is that once that waste is collected and those recyclables are collected, they need to go somewhere. So that's, that's, that's where we, we mesh there. And also, we have different, we have several recycling programs that are held throughout the year. We have shredding programs, we have hazardous waste collection events, and those are open to all Calvert County residents, whether they have a collection service or not. Okay. Moving on. Chapter one summarizes what legislation is in place to manage solid waste and recyclables. At the state level, there's Cohort Title 26, subtitle four. Locally, we have the Code of Public Local Laws, chapter 119. Zoning ordinances, Calvert County Comprehensive Land Use Plans, Solid Waste Management Comprehensive Plan, which is what we're presenting tonight, recycling plan, which is incorporated into this plan, emergency operation plans, and public utility and industry response plans. Chapter two evaluated population projections. County projections versus state projections were within 1,000 people, therefore, we utilized the county projections throughout the entire plan. Both county and state population projections grew at a steady growth of 2% to 3% over the 10-year planning period annually, 2% to 3% annually. Chapter two highlights local legislation. As I mentioned before, we have the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is right now under development by Calvert County. Zoning ordinances, which will follow once they adopt the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, then they'll move into any zoning ordinance changes. The ordinances control development, and I know you have local ordinances as well, control development of solid waste and recycling facilities based on zoning and land use regulation. Currently, this includes commercial recycling facilities, land clearing debris landfills, rubble landfills, sanitary landfills, and solid waste collection sites. All of the facilities are permitted in a light industrial district if they meet certain conditions. Land clearing debris and solid waste collection sites are also permitted in the other zoning Chapter three developed estimated waste projections. Using a per capita generation rate, which is essentially the waste tonnage generated per person per year, for municipal solid waste, we came up with, the factor calculation that we used was that we generated 27.8 tons of MSW at last, in '17, divided by that by 88,730 people in Calvert County. So each person generates about a third of a ton a year of waste. So that gives us our foundation for looking ahead. So we take those formulas and we put, and we overlay them with the projected growth rates, and we come up with our projected solid waste handling for the next 11, 10 years. I say 11, but 10 years. And these are, I know it's quite small, but you can see we're handling somewhere between 70,000 and 80,000 tons of waste a year in Calvert County. That does not include, just want to make mention, it does not include any waste that is collected through a commercial service and trucked out of Calvert County. This is everything that we can account for that's handled and processed within Calvert
Julie, is all that in appeal?
Yes, the transfer station. And I'll talk a little bit more about appeal in a couple of slides. So where is the materials managed? The existing solid waste acceptance facilities in Calvert County, the public facilities include sanitary landfills, the mayor just mentioned Appeal Municipal Landfill in Lesby, Sweetwater Road, Barstow Municipal Landfill, for some of you that have been in Calvert County for a while, you'll remember this, at the end of Stafford Road, is now closed and packed and larger. We have seven convenience centers located within seven miles of each other. Appeal, Ball Road, Barstow, Huddington, Lesby, Mount Hope, which was recently renovated, and Palm Point. And the public molting site is located at the Appeal landfill. We also have several private facilities in Calvert County that handle solid waste. Their waste management owns and operates a transfer station at the Appeal landfill. There is a land clearing debris land, there are two land clearing debris landfills, one owned by Howland and one owned by Hance, which is recently closed. A natural waste recycling facility managed by 8H Hatcher and 231 Materials and Recycling Products. Molting sites are also Hatcher and Hance and 231 Farm Center. And processing facilities, processing facilities include Southern Maryland Cycling and Processing Facility, which you're probably familiar with, rubble b, recycling and demolition, and super salvage. Chapter three, the majority, to finalize chapter three, the majority of MSW and recyclables generated within Calvert County are exported to facilities outside of the county. We have a 25-year contract with Waste Management for hauling of all solid waste received at the Appeal transfer station. It's trucked to the King George Mill landfill in Virginia for disposal. This contract expires in February 2002. We are already in the planning stages for the next contract. Or, I would say, the next phase of handling MSW.
You said 2002?
22.
20.
So we're already starting to look at how we're going to handle that MSW after February 2022. Recyclables are transported to what we call a MRF, or a materials recycling facility in Northern Virginia, or respective markets for processing, for further processing. The benefit to exporting MSW is that it's preserving what we call air space or capacity at the Appeal Municipal Landfill for future generations. I brought my future generation in. Cohort requires that the county plan to evaluate several items, which will summarize in, in the chapters four slides. So we're required to go into a little bit more detail on convenience center improvements. We completed the construction of the new Mount Hope Convenience Center in May of 2017. Appeal Convenience Center is, is going to rate, rather. Appeal Convenience Center is, um, is gonna break ground, I'm sorry, gonna have a ribbon cutting on June nineteenth, so we will be opening in June. And the Lesby Convenience Center is anticipated to cease operations shortly thereafter. Designs for the Barstow Convenience Center improvements are planned for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Just wanna make mention that each one of those convenience centers are in, um, a respective district, so each district has a convenience center that is open seven days a week, and is larger in size and has, um, been, um, and it ha- except for Barstow, um, has this new design in place to, um, process the folks through quicker. How does the county encourage store separation and waste reduction? By posting information to our county website, technical assistance for county haulers and businesses to promote waste reduction techniques and recycling, encourage private entities operating in Calvert to report recycling rates, coordination with other Southern Maryland counties such as Charles, St. Mary's, um, and stone extent, uh, in, in Orlando, and increased public education. Also, I'm, chapter four talks about feasibility of resource recovery. Um, this is not considered feasible at this time due to the high capital costs and operating costs. And just quite frankly, we don't generate enough waste in Calvert County to keep a facility of this magnitude open, um, and operating. We will continue to, um, and for those who might not be familiar with source, uh, resource recovery, um, the best example I would have for this would be a waste-to-energy plan. Um, so we will continue looking at this over the ten-year planning period based on changes in economics and growth in the county. Uh, we also have to talk about in chapter four, public education. Uh, we do a lot of outreach at, at Division of Solid Waste. We assign banners at each convenience centers, uh, we advertise through local media, we, we are present at recycling presentations, uh, we give presentations at schools, communities, and civic organizations as requested. Um, we have a presentation at, uh, representation at local events and expos. We have bro- uh, brochures and flyers, I know Bill brought some with him tonight, and the county website, um, is ma- maintained and updated every month. Chapter four requires us to look at asbestos. This is not projected to be a major, uh, waste generation over that ten-year period. Um, we're also required to look at emergencies, village, or leakage of hazardous or radioactive waste. Um, the hazardous materials response plan, which utilizes, um, which utilizes the, uh, the Calvert County Hazardous Materials Response Team, emergency management staff, and fire departments. So this is really handled by a specific group of professionals. Um, and, um, radioactive waste is managed by the, uh, at a private level, by the public utilities and the, uh, industry response plans. Uh, lastly, the adequacy of local zoning ordinance, uh, re- review of the solid waste ordinance and the zoning ordinance as part of the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-eight comprehensive plan update modifications that may be beneficial include requiring recycling and processing facilities to submit an application to the Department of Public Works Planning and Zoning for review and approval. Um, and this is to meet minimum recycling rates, um, for the county. Okay, this is really where the rubber hits the road, um, chapter five. Chapter five, um, talks about, in chapter five, in your, what you have in front of you, goes into a lot of specifics about areas that we're gonna consider, look at, um, but we came up with five priority action items in five. These are things that we will accomplish in the next ten years. Um, the first one is pretty overarching. Um, we're gonna be looking at public health and environmental protection as we always do, and, um, that is to ensure that waste and recyclables are managed at permitted disposal and processing facilities, waste and recycling hauling vehicles are properly registered, insured, and inspected by the state and the county health department, management of commercial, industrial, and institutional waste are managed by respective industries. County will encourage the use of in-county facilities for management and processing, and management of controlled hazardous substances, and management of other wastes and, and other recyclables, which I've listed up here. So it's pretty comprehensive, um, the, the depth of what we handle at Calvert County, um, and the regulations that surround it. So these are all these things that we have to be cognizant of, we have to make sure that we are continuously working with the state and, and being trained and updated on changes. Um, so the, that's why this is priority action one, just protect the health and environment. Action two, uh, we're gonna be looking at a feasibility study for new transportation, which I talked about, uh, several slides back, um, well, I touched on it. Our twenty, our twenty-year contract is coming up for renewal, a twenty-five-year contract's coming up for renewal. We're gonna be taking, taking an approach where we're gonna do a feasibility study for new transfer station. The options may include, but are not limited to, um, upgrading, um, capital costs required to purchase and upgrade the existing station. We may release a RFP for private entity to develop, own, and operate the transfer station, uh, develop an, or develop a new transfer station to be either owned and operated by the county, or operated by a private entity, or explore regionalization with other interested counties. So those are all open for consideration right now. Um, we will revisit and modify the existing sticker program. We do have a sticker program at our convenience centers currently, um, but we need to modify it, um, we need it to be more robust. Um, we want to incorporate the program cost into the user fee, or as a standalone cost. Uh, we'll issue these stickers on an annual basis. A proof of residency will be required to obtain a sticker. Um, we'll have to monitor who comes in and has a sticker, uh, and the potential revenue from a material received, there could be a revenue potential if we allow other Howard County residents to, to purchase a sticker at perhaps a different cost. We're also going to be researching a pay-as-you throw program, so it'll be one or the other. It won't be both. And a pay-as-you throw is you pay for bad. The benefits of, of looking at a pay-as-you throw is it does, um, encourage recycling. Chapter five, pri- priority action number three, encourage citizens and businesses to recycle, reduce, and reuse materials. Um, we have a new app, Prepare Me Calvert, and that, um, lets, uh, citizens, makes them aware of upcoming recycling activities there and programs that are in the area. Business directory of waste and recycled services offered in the county, uh, construction and demolition, debris recycling, and diversion payback program, and review and modification of local ordinances and plans. Priority action number four, we're gonna explore the management of what we call stormwater BMP, uh, waste and other hard-to-manage waste. This would be, um, waste that's coming off of storm drains, culverts, um, stormwater ponds, um, they all have a, they have to be handled in a certain way. And prior, ten-year priority action number five, and, and to maintain a budget structure that provides the framework to support the solid waste recycling program as a self-sustaining enterprise fund. Um, we collect, our, our services are paid for by the users of the services and not from the general fund. So we'll be taking a true cost anali- we'll be looking at a true cost analysis for waste and, um, recyclable services, we'll be looking at land, landfill disposal fees, and we'll be also evaluating, reevaluating our annual solid waste fee and how those costs are utilized in return to the citizens. So summary of, of the changes from the last ten years, um, we're evaluating future facilities and contracted services since the existing transfer station contract expires pretty soon, so that's, um, we're gonna establish county regulations, requirements for recycling and, and/or processing facilities. Again, as I mentioned, the true cost analysis, and explore citizen service options and payments for service such as pay-as-you throw or a separate program. Whoa. Um, the next steps after, um, we met with Board of County Commissioners, we met with the Planning Commission, we met with you folks tonight, the town of Chesapeake Beach we met with, um, we presented this draft plan to, uh, MDE, we've also given a copy to the Environmental Commission and to the zoning board. We're asking for comments back by the end of May. Um, we expect to incorporate all those changes and go back in front of the Board of County Commissioners in August in a public hearing to adopt the plan. Um, we'll send the final version, adopted version to MDE for sometime around, um, September, and expect about a thirty to sixty-day return from MDE on the plan. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Julie.
Sure.
The cog in the wheel that makes the whole thing work is the Appeal Transfer Station.
Right.
Um, and I was associated with county government when that was cited, and I can tell you, that is a rigorous task to, to locate a place that's acceptable, you know what I mean? I, I cannot see county trying to find another location within Calvert County.
Well, right now, um, and I, I will ask Mike to help me out here, we, we still have, um, we still have capacity.
There.
There. Can you put the specifics, Mike?
Yes, the, uh, transfer station serves as a, um, better cost-effective operation for disposal of waste at the current time. We still have capacity in the operating cell that is developed at this point, and we have a future cell to the north side that has not been, hasn't even cleared.
That's, that's good to hear.
So the transfer station, location of a new transfer station would be right behind the existing transfer station.
And how long is King George gonna hold?
They're in business, but they, they will-
Do they actually transfer somewhere else, or is it all this-
Certainly, landfill, but they have several hundreds, thousands of acres they're prepared for.
As part of our feasibility, that will be one thing that we look at. We will be looking at, um, the capacity of King George and, um, and other, um, mega-cells that, uh, other, uh, perhaps Republic have, perhaps Republic has, um, also has a mega- so we'll be looking at those, because those variables will definitely affect our future planning as well.
Well, thank you very much, Julie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Come back to North Beach sometime with your daughter. You know, when, oh, well, that's good to hear. Oh, thank you.
We love your four daughters.
Okay, we have some garden club rep- oh, I see Deborah. You wanna introduce, uh, your members, and then we'll go about recognizing your basket winners?
So, um, this is our fifth annual, I think our fifth annual, maybe that's it, and we cheer some of the veterans, veterans on our, ladies, no, go ahead. I'm shy. So, um, Madeline Blake is our, um, committee chair for that project, so those are the donations she's taken.
Well, Madeline, thank you for taking that on.
Yes, oh, good. Makes the time better. Even though I live in Chesapeake Beach.
It's all right.
So I will let her take you away.
Um, we had a pretty good turnout this year. We, we're hoping for fourteen people, but maybe due to the way we didn't get that many, but, um, the winners in the homeowners were Rose Burcham, Sue Crutchfield, and Jennifer Humor. Thank you.
With the winners, please come forward, be recognized.
Rose didn't just do one basket, she did three.
Rose lives at the, uh, corner of Seventh and Eight, yes. They're on the, uh, I guess that's the southeast corner, yes, the southeast corner. Congratulations. You got a lovely home, by the way.
Uh, for the businesses, I'm not sure they will be here, I had a call from one saying maybe not, but Hook &amp; Vine.
Isn't that wonderful, new, new in business and name.
Right, a very unique arrangement, that was. And then Art Works at Seventh and, uh, at the Bay, Heeding Arts.
Wonderful. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
I saw pictures of them online.
Yes, they're on Facebook, if anybody wants to see.
On the town.
On the town.
Thank you.
Okay, you're certainly welcome. And thank you for reinstituting your house and garden tour this year. You wanna say anything about that?
Uh, sure, and I have, I'm gonna be doing something in public comment as well, but, um, sure, thanks for the, the, um, time there. Uh, yeah, so, um, this year, after a three-year hiatus, we're gonna have the house and garden tour, and we're really excited, as are the homeowners. We just had our homeowners meeting on Tuesday night, and all of them came, which was incredible.
Yes.
And they're, they're really excited, and, um, as well, we have, um, let's see, seven homes, um, two gardens, my, just my garden, my house has been on there, so just, and the Sunrise Garden is gonna be on there. We have two master gardens that are serviced to citizens that day, that Sunrise Garden, that were, um, involved in helping with planting, so they're nice enough to, we're gonna do some shift work of giving a guided tour if you want a guided tour, or some people may just be here for the houses that blitz through the garden, but they're gonna be there, which is nice.
Wow, thank you.
And then a couple of other public spaces, um, the museum, and, um, Justice Valley, and, yeah, we're excited, we're very, very excited, so.
Just pray for good weather.
Right.
You know, sometimes, uh, events like this require a little break.
Right.
You know, for new things to spring up, or to grow, to be built.
Excitement, right, and I've seen that on, on social media, they're, you know, they've been trying to post it, Facebook and Instagram and such, and people are sharing, sharing, and tagging friends, going, it's back, it's back, it's back, so, um, hopefully, yeah, we'll have a lot of them. So June, Sunday, June, the first Sunday in June, one to five, will be there.
Thank you, Deborah. Um, okay, Lieutenant, safety report?
We have a whole lot to report again this month, one hundred and thirty-one calls for service, and you see, uh, one CDS arrest, one theft, and our registration plate was closed by arrest, two DUIs, trespassing arrests, and one disloyal arrest.
Now, you just leave a speech, who knows? As I say, I mean, it is what it is, but it's, it's not very much.
No, and, uh, thanks for that, it's not, uh, sometimes it changes a little bit, sometimes.
Yes, uh, but before you sit down, are there any questions?
I'll just, the, uh, follow on your report, you, you list it, what types of calls, it just says it's April twenty-seventeen, I think it's, the title probably.
It says in April of twenty-eighteen, the sheriff's on the handle of one hundred and thirty-one calls for service, and, uh, this, it, it, it says what we did in April, April of twenty-seventeen compared to, under the data, it's April twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, you answered that, didn't you? Oh, someone asked that.
It's in the second page.
Second page.
At the top of that, it's in April twenty-seventeen.
We're going back to the future.
Those are twenty-eighteen data.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm sorry. Just to get updated on Ricky, do we have anything out there outstanding, or?
Uh, no, he's-
Did you want to pass?
Was his report, and I read it yourself.
I only got those two reports.
Okay, I apologize. It says in April twenty-eighteen, uh, he assisted patrol in answering forty-three calls for service, uh, sent the traffic stops of his own, he investigated one burglary, uh, which is still under investigation, he conducted one search, one to collect evidence, and then moved on to investigation, uh, concluded two other case reports were incidents within the town of McIsner, and he assisted with two narcotics investigations.
I'm, I'm going to add to the report.
Okay.
Uh, since many of us who live in the beach travel Mount Harmony Road.
You're taking away my, my promise as a mayor.
All right, I'll leave them for you.
No, 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 it's all about ski care with campus.
Yeah, the, uh, the speed cameras, uh, which are mounted in areas, uh, they say they're near school, but they're not really that close to the school. Uh, they rotate around the county. And, uh, this particular one has rotated back to Mount Harmony Road, not at the elementary school where it was for a year or two, but in front of Jesus the Good Shepherd, Cardinal Hickey Academy. So be careful when you drive through there. You know, there's, the signs that are put up there are misleading. The law that enables law enforcement to do this provides that those cameras can only be in operation Monday through Friday, from six A M. in the morning to eight P M. in the evening. There's no difference if it's a school holiday or whether it's school, that, that's not part of it, I mean, that's... I don't get me started on the safety. It's, it's not, it's not year-round, okay? They say year-round, it's not. Am I correct, Ron, is that the law?
It is year-round.
Oh, oh, it's year-round.
It's year-round, but it's only-
It's only on days you said Monday, Friday.
Monday through Friday. It's, it does not work on the weekends and does not work before six o'clock in the morning or after eight P M. in the evenings. That's the law. And, and I just want to say that because that's not what the signs say. So be careful when you're going. Well, you know, I have this-
Is it only speed on Saturdays and Sundays?
It's, it's actually-
Or after eight P M.
I just think of all the money I set over Chesapeake Beach for that.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking a lot in the morning. Look, look, D, D C. makes millions of dollars, all the cities make millions of dollars. Chesapeake Beach does pretty well, too. Wasn't, wasn't your idea?
No, yeah.
But I, I'm proud to say we don't have one in North Beach.
I have one on two sixty-one.
Call this school, you're out.
Okay, thank, thank you for that report.
You know, and I, I wrote the story for the Chesapeake Current and I talked to Dave Payne. It's actually until midnight, not eight A M., midnight.
I don't think so.
Yes, that's what he told me.
The state law.
I think the state is there, not, so.
That's not what he told me.
Yeah, don't speed.
But, 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 keep your money.
Thank, thank, thank you, Ron. Great job you're doing, Karen. Okay, treasures report?
Okay, you have two treasures reports. Um, you have February's, but you also have March. Uh, it was accidentally left out of package last month. So you want me to read February?
No, just, just the most recent.
Okay, let's do March first through March thirty-first. Beginning balance was six hundred and fifty thousand in the general fund. Total debit was four hundred and ninety thousand and total credit was two hundred eighty five hundred. Any balance was eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. Investments in M L G I P was three million, three hundred thousand. M L G I P sewer was thirty-four thousand and M L G I P water was seventy thousand. Total cash available to the town of North Beach for the month of March was four million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand. For the same period last year was three million, nine hundred ninety thousand. Hotel tax, we received a hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. For the same period last year, it was twenty-six dollars and thirteen cents. State business license revenue, we received zero this month, or the month of March. And last year it was six dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Thank you, Joanna. Council, you see the I M I.'s receipts, dispersments over seventy-five hundred. You have any questions, Joanna? People have a motion to accept her report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Joanna.
You're welcome.
Good job. Nadine?
Before you have a couple of highlight projects that we've been working on in the past month, um, and also some regular routine stuff that you have to answer. Uh, following, so updated, like, some of the major projects, beach dredge project. Contract's finished up on beach dredge. Um, we took out approximately three thousand cubic yards of sand out of water and placed it back on the beach. Listening to Joanna's budget number, mine number's off over here, but it's, uh, eight hundred more cubic yards that was in, that in the con, original contract we got from Grant. Their contract was two thousand and seven, and we were at two thousand and eight hundred grand per. But we eliminated some of the stuff that was in the contract in order to keep that eight hundred yards not, you know, those, uh, accepted.
Well, look, you gotta do what you gotta do when that equipment is there.
Right.
You're also saying, what, a hundred ninety thousand, ninety thousand just to-
Just to murderize. While we got a major, we have to, if you have to go south of the beach. And, uh, we, I think Richard can tell you, it's probably more beach we have in the last seven, eight, nine, ten years. So, you know, picked up a great deal of beach on both sides, the north side and south side. Um, that allows us to take our equipment around and actually do maintenance on the south side again. When I first started working, you could get around the back and do maintenance. Probably second year, I was here, if that disappeared, we couldn't get able to do any maintenance at all on the south side. So now we can get that area worked and do some maintenance on that side.
Well, we're able to do it before it disappears again.
That's the only key is keeping it there. But we didn't get over some rocks, everybody played with the kids, so, and we were able to move them around.
Looks a lot better.
And then as part of that, uh, part of that job, we also brought in ten loads of new sand and D P W. brought in. Spread that to top all three dredge standing there. Uh, next thing was, we got Cowl Spark Playground. Uh, D P W. worked with the waterfront staff, Richard was real, actually, uh, um, did this project, spearheaded this project here to install new playground equipment and service in Cowl Spark area. When the contract was completed, D P W. went in and degraded a little bit and also put the sod in there. And that area, people haven't been over there yet, but it really transformed, I think, a lot nicer. It, just like some of our garden did. Um, when we put the sod down, so many kids, you know, so many parents using it, it was a full house and it was everywhere there. So, I think it's great, appreciated a lot, uh, much.
I agree with you, but it's just going to get a lot of use, a lot of use over it, so.
Uh, we did, Richard also had, uh, same company did the fence around the, um, seniors kind of out there. James put the short fence around the pile, so also very helpful, even kids are making the furniture out of the street there. Um, just for me on the boardwalk, uh, D P W. whenever got the plans from, we ordered all materials out in here. It's a little bit more than what probably D P W. could handle, so we went, we hired a contractor to do the framing portion of that. Uh, really looked at, had a great framing guy. Me showed up at, um, well, Thursday, it was finished on Friday at twelve o'clock, but I mean, very much on the frame, so.
That looks great.
And it really turned out nicely. I think that was a good move, but it wasn't, it's pretty recent, the president lost it, so I think he saved it along on there. Um, we did need rest of materials to finish up with, that came in today. Um, I ordered metal for the roof, so D P W. is going to finish up that, hopefully next week, reset up and completed. Uh, working with Kane, I used to look at electrical needs, maybe for lighting, or some other stuff, so we can use that, you know, like, I'm fully. It is much, much use out of the can. Um, continue to work with Mr. Woodburn here on the sewer agreement we have in Calhoun County. And also look at all the flows. Paul will get into it in this report a little bit, we did get, we mapped out the area. And he's got some numbers for you, showing you the amount of house that are in Calhoun County that go on to, uh, town system, brokered town system. All right, bottom of concerns, we're back on site and we redid some plannings this week. Um, they did some plannings on the water side of the burn. Um, still waiting for an email updating with their status of the project. When they did that, I'll provide it to you. And then talk to Paul about this, I think we need to go to the funds list after we see what, our concerns, um, states of favor. I love sort of, you know, the big chief, all this, on the ground, back there. Uh, just some minor stuff, uh, grass season's back, so then busy cutting grass, we eat around stop signs, that type of thing. Um, did replace the service saddle that was at, uh, forty-twelve Fifth Street. Ever bar date up the street, going down to the many. Boy, we found, I'm going to call, complaining about a metal wood crush. We kind of, kind of a saddle that is used for gas, gas lines on the frame. Stop by, share, whatever, they put a little water saddle. I don't know how they got that one, but, um, you know, we're going to have, we have a few places we can do saddle with that, that problem, so. Uh, we did have a lot of the irrigation heads and strength system going bad, we're working that, we're calling these there, with all the parks and the garden areas. Um, yeah, we're continuing to, you can make stuff throughout town, some grid system, that type of thing. Um, still got some sewer problems, Paul might have done that report. Actually, we're talking about, that's a cool, meetings about the dikes, the silver wipes, falling out of the last of that. I found it in England, daisy outfall, so there's so much struggle with sewer plants, they no longer even make them in England.
Really?
It's really, I think, a problem. You know, everybody started, it wasn't that bad, but, but just found out yesterday in England outlawed. W S S C. spending, I talked to somebody up there, made dollars, just removing that type of material, so. Paul, you can show them here, Paul's in there.
We worked at the Wadeport Fusion Plant, they're pulling, um, homes daily. They ran all the problems, and then like, daily. And I said, I don't need to keep running up, it's kind of a worry, totally, but anybody using disposal wipes, please throw them in the trash, because it's, it's really starting to, maybe yours should all, I can't believe that this is, he's spending many dollars, not just on any. But I think you have to take their all, on our account, all P P. account, and what's with, uh, these, uh, about it.
It's in the newsletter.
We're going, Dad, we're going like twice a week here, actually, you know, we have problems, so, but, not as bad as the plant, but twice a week, but, you know, it's good there, it's good.
Don, Don, you did it on blast, too, didn't you?
Yeah, she did it on blast, and then the newsletter.
Email last and Facebook and newsletter, I'll mention in my report, totally fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions of Donna? Thank you, Donna.
Yep.
Paul?
Um, I guess I'll jump right on to the sewer, what I left off of that. I gave each of you a poll done, but it's easier to manage, two little plans. And I have bigger material that I can leave, and I can email this to you, too. Basically, these are two, um, snapshots of the town. One shows the lots, one shows the structure of the houses that are in each lot. Um, I brought this to attention to show you, so, if you can see, outlined in red, um, the area that Donna and I believe is currently being served, Calhoun County houses to, uh, town sewer system, which is, let's see, I calculated it to be six hundred and twenty-five houses, um, six hundred and sixty lots, there's some that aren't developed yet. And I don't know what's occurring, we're looking at it right now with the current, uh, usage that the town believes is coming to the system. And we're going to, if I didn't realize that, I'll be in with Calhoun and straighten it out. Not only for the pump stations, but, but, I would look. And I also showed one of the various pump stations, I know they're kind of small, but they're a little block, just so you can see where they are. Um, there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them, right kind of at the border. And down at the bottom, this wastewater treatment facility or raccoon information facility. And the two pump stations, uh, one right up the street and the one right up where you go on South Carolina County. So, so, so that gives you a snapshot, and then I can email you the whole plan, I have a better one here. You guys can kind of see, I, I think the last agreement show was like three hundred and something, so I don't see how much is-
How much it's grown?
Yeah, it's grown, and it's just kind of, I think, and another piece, too, out to the left of the sheet is Windy Hill, which is a force man that comes down into the town also. So, I'm just helping you to go and figure out how much that's going to down there.
Well, look, it looks like this could be pretty active, I mean, do, do we need a flood meter?
I don't know how much is coming out of Windy Hill. I mean, I just don't know.
Does that come through our system, though, or does that go straight to the plan?
No, it comes down to the system.
Yeah, when you help our system.
Everything comes through our system, and then goes to the plant.
So, so Windy Hill comes down fifth, then?
Yeah, comes down fifth and dumped into Madison, it's not, okay.
I mean, that's one of the things. Now, that's the one that you can get information, so I got a water tower.
Right. How much waters?
We look at the, look at the situation, we're having our cover, uh, Greenwood Avenue, and they had one in Manhole, uh, county, that's a portable one, it's supposed to wireless. But we had problems with people on it, the manhole top, they don't have the antenna, and it's things around, one of us are like, old doctor, they're all a bit more. So they're not, you know, for the money that we put out, I think, usually they use, you know, like, twenty-five pounds a household, and we can come up with this flow. And what we're going to do, so Paul's help is, you know, send it to the county, kind of, this is what we think, don't go with what you think. And start to get to things like that, and, and instead of spend all the money on flooding and, you know, I have a great for him, you know, whatever that is, kind of, send him a letter. See how it deals out.
And we should have a pretty good, uh, we have a lot of percent in, you know, things like, you know, about this, I think he's looking at it, but, um, you know.
It looks like, looking at this map?
Yeah.
Looks like it is.
We have, uh, I think it's, we have about nine hundred, we have six sixty plus, so. Kind of a windmill, it should be, you know.
You know what I mean?
And, and our usage is metered, so.
The all our usage?
Yes, so there should be a pretty good, between the two numbers, I, I use two fifty as the, as, as the daily number, and got a hundred and fifty-six thousand coming through a day, so it's two twenty-five is a little bit busting that, but, you know.
Well, well, we know, as you say, in Chesapeake Beach, we have metered everything that's come down.
Yeah.
We know the total to, at that end, but we can draw a, we figure out.
Yeah, we're, we're down to fifty thousand.
Yeah. I, I know one time, this goes back years ago, that other agreement, um, they had houses up there, they didn't even know existed. They were building and tapped into the line and, you know, because, because the numbers were off by a lot. Obviously, they, they're probably a lot, but like you said, a lot of the clean outs are broken off, there's no cover, and down at the, down at the ditch, where it fills up, the water's that into them, so.
Oh, like some palm stone, and-
Yeah. All right, so, so Paul, you're going to proceed with the meeting, meeting with Calhoun County. All right, thank you.
What were those numbers again, for the houses in the lot?
Uh, six twenty-five and six sixty. Six twenty-five houses, six sixty lots. Uh, Councilman Benton, you were at the meeting on the Chesapeake Beach, about the potential lights. I don't know if there was a thought about it, I put it in my report. Uh, looks like there is, within the next two years, going to be light at Limerick and two sixty, and Harrison and two sixty.
That, that's where, that's Richfield Station.
Richfield Station.
Coming into two sixty.
There'll be cameras, so they'll only, they'll only, uh, flow red or turn red if somebody's at the light, or, you know, what they'll do is they'll back them off a certain distance. Um, most likely at night, they'll probably stay green, late at night, because maybe they're going to be coming to Limerick or Harrison to turn. But it's come, it warranted, and the state came down to the presentation, it did, uh, and, uh.
Okay, couple of years.
Couple of years, uh, just one last thing. Um, we, uh, put together a graph for the boardwalk, go back to the state for the grant. So that's, and it works, and drawn up the work on that.
Thank you, Paul.
When would that grant, when would it be funded?
When will it be funded?
When, when, gets funded?
Last year, we didn't hear until winter, I mean, it was like December or something, or, or, so. When do you all think you're going to be, uh, addressing Calhoun County at this conversation?
Soon, I'd say the next couple of weeks, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, pretty quick. I called already and tried to, uh, you can set up something I hadn't heard back in this week, it's supposed to be, this. Put us a little, for you.
Oh, for the, yeah, that was.
Well, we're kind of like, we got the count now, so we got, you know, the one, the other, so we'll, we'll have that stuff together, and all the rest of, you know, this way, so. Then I think when we see that, we got our information, I think, they're seriously got it, doing a lot of food. Because I got some pictures of the clean outs, and that's, that's a big issue, because that is a big monitor, it gets the loading, so we charge for stormwater, so, too, so. Maybe there's some maintenance up there, just.
I'll have you a priori.
Yeah.
Paul, can I ask on the flood, I mean, the flood pump at Ninth Atlantic? So where, I know we sort of say ongoing, but what's the, what's the status of that?
I think at this point, uh, we wanted a grant, to get money to fit the design and get it built. You know, Veronica, she, she found one, we tried to go after it, but I don't think that it will, it was only for design. But, uh, it was more related to stormwater, and it's not going to last long, so. I know she comes up with different ones, I'll go after money for it.
How much money do you have?
Probably thirty, forty thousand, it's on, it's on.
Yeah.
I'll bet you a hundred grand.
How long, pardon me? Done.
That's what we're asking for, it's, but, yeah.
I just have one question about the dredge project. Did you dredge out any of the boats, or?
That was on, that was, yeah, the boats, yeah.
Big one?
The boats, lifts were dredged, uh, a year and a half, or two years ago.
Yeah, they still down? Yeah, they still down?
Yeah, they, they look like they're going pretty good, they had to go back in, they're pretty much the same day.
Also, I noticed where the, the Higginton Million is, underneath that section of the boardwalk, it's kind of a big, kind of culvert down there. Is there any concern with water getting in there, kind of flushing out the beach? Is that just the way it is?
That's just the way, yeah, the place is getting in there for maintenance. Right, it's hard to get, you can't get it staying up on there, they push it forward, they go back up there.
Wasn't sure the, like, design, or who's in the, or?
That thing is on there a long time.
It's reality.
I think it stayed really healthy, it stays, that's a, here to go.
Kind of right under the pier?
Right, yeah. Under the Higginton Million part where the new, what was that, it's kind of a little, down on the outstop, but they didn't really, couldn't wait to get down there.
Here, the pump needs to fill, like, someplace starts there, you could cut it over, but.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Is that, is that near to the?
It's near the boat, and it's, and it's, uh, a rock, so. Yes, yeah, it's a four block stop, right about where the boat is, and then it continued down from there.
Never in there.
Yeah.
Never in there, okay, code enforcement, Rick, anything on code?
Uh, no, I just wanted to add that we do have some things that don't show up on there yet, uh, like currently, I've got fourteen ongoing or pending zoning projects, all of which at this point are residential, whether they be additions or new houses, or lot developments. Um, rental inspections and civil citations are not showing up on here yet, we still have to get those put in. Um, and there's no way for me to really show on there, like citizen interactions, when people call and have a concern about something, when one of us has to go out and just go meet with, with, you know, one of the citizens to go over questions they have or anything else, which happens from time, that actually happens a lot, but there's no way to really, um, there's no way to really highlight that on one of these things here, so.
We know you do it.
But that, so if we can, if I can find, but we're trying to, we've, uh, we've actually sent an email to ask if there's a way to, to try to put some of those things in there, because it does have something to, to track hours outside of just those, so we're trying to manipulate this to work a little better as well.
I like the map though, it's, the layout is amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got a question, uh, which I've brought up a couple of times, as we've looked through here, a lot of violations are, uh, grass and so forth. Just stay on top of the, when you, when you get to the houses of individuals that are not, you know, I mean, you got your, your finger on a pulse, so if you come across a house that, for whatever reason, they cannot take care of it, they want to do it, but physically, I mean, whatever, just make sure you let us know, because, you know, we've, we've been working on getting a group together and intending to help residents out, so just let us know, you're out there every day. Come across a home, let us know that they need help, grass cutting, maintenance, or whatever.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is a lot of those people, we, we find ways to get help from, the ones where you have the biggest problems with, and the ones who refuse them, don't want to.
Let us know with those too, because maybe we can talk to them, you know what I mean, maybe we can, I don't know.
I actually reached out to the, uh, the lady who runs the food pantry over here, and a lot of those people are frequent customers of hers, and so they trust her a little more, and they're a little less, a little less hesitant to speak to her about things, so. She's also, uh, has agreed that if we have someone in there, a regular customer in there, that she'll reach out and try to talk to them, and try and raise some help from her end, so it doesn't, they don't feel like the town is trying to impose some sort of fee on the performing work.
Yeah, absolutely, because if you look at this map, I mean, that's mainly, it's all very Google, I mean, trash rubbish, I mean, just make sure, you know, just let us, keep us in the loop, if you come across somebody that's a grass owner to, uh, St. Anthony's, but, you know, we can step in to help some out.
Anything else for Rick? Thank you, Rick. Do you have a question for Rick?
Oh, no, I, are you going to have the time for someone to address something?
Yes, we have a public comment period, yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay, Dawn?
Uh, okay, shirt check, created inventory list, ordered merchandise and moved everything into the building. Um, sat nav, decorated interior, created price list, signed it, everything you need to do to open a small store like this. Um, I mentioned Kelly, Kelly helped a lot, um, with these tasks, she was also the one that entered all of the merchandise into the clothing system, um, that keeps track of the inventory, and it's also the cash register, that thing, Kelly brings together and stuff. Um, also, Downing was screwing up a lot to get ready, Richard and Bud, so they could open, um, last Friday for the first farmers market. Um, seems like everybody was excited about it, we got positive feedback, and, um, I feel like it was, it was successful. Um, in the future, you'll see some customers there, and our very first customer, you know, familiar to someone who's in there, is that, you know, Peter.
That's my brother.
It's the mayor's brother.
Uh, let's see, trademark, so when you go online and check the status for the trademark, it says review prior to publication completed. So we're almost there with it, um, we haven't run into any issues, the attorney just keep saying, we'll let them know when it's, when it's final, and when we get the final approval for that. Um, created advertisements to promote the town, waves and events, gathered information, photographs, and compiled articles for the town newsletter. Um, I'll be printing that next week, and it will be nailed by the end of the week. Uh, thanks, prepare for the acknowledgement ceremony, that's tomorrow at Calis Park around eleven o'clock, um, to recognize the Calvert Arts Council, the Maryland State Arts Council, and also Chris German, who, um, created the gate at Calis Park. Um, I attended the presentation for the Board of Libraries Trustees a few weeks back. Um, there's toilet talk, we talked about that, um, prepared flyers, and sent out the email last, um, Donnie also asked for a flyer to be put in the water building, um, nearly the last ones that went in there as well. Um, so again, don't flush anything, no toileting that says flushable. Um, and something funny, a gentleman came into town hall, and it asked if you could see a picture of the air tension that were pounding.
Uh-oh.
We didn't have a picture, but it was kind of strange, so you can't really see it, it was kind of.
More than that.
Information all around.
Um, prepared, isn't it, he was bald too.
It wasn't.
Prepared in print, with me a poster post in the corner of May, next week, promoted attendance, photographed the Comcast Fairbanks Town Event, um, uploaded those photos to the Facebook page, and I have some pictures here of that, we had a lot of volunteers this year, um, you could see them painting flowers there, and they also did the mulch. Um, the other picture below is there where the Girl Scouts at Calis Park, they planted, the Girl Scouts were planting this flower over there, a little sculpture. And if you haven't seen, we have sod and stuff over there, it's really nice. Um, promoted the opening night for the farmers market and the art fair, um, I don't know, I saw a few of you down there, the crowd was huge, everyone was happy to be out. Continued work on the town marketing brochure, kind of behind on that, but hopefully that will be done early next week and sent out to the printer. Uh, promoted the North Beach House and Garden Club tour, sent out the email last and shared their, uh, Facebook posts. Um, and it does, like, the other side, it seems like everyone's excited that the tour's back. Shared the made day basket runners and, um, photos on Facebook and, um, on the House and Garden Club page, on our website, all the photos of the women's markets as well. And my daily tasks, um, as of two days ago, we have two hundred and fifty subscribers to the new text notification system, eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-six followers on Facebook, one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven followers on Twitter, and one thousand four hundred and two followers on Instagram. Uh, last page is a list of our events, and then I put these pictures in there of the farmers market because, it's like, people, people don't, the one shot is up, um, Fifth Street, which is always crowded in there, um, but you can barely get through, and then Bay Avenue as well, it's just full of people. Everyone's having a time, and.
Thank you, thank you, Dawn. You continue to impress me with the variety of projects that you're involved in. I mean, our Facebook is something special, our page. And you with Angel's drone pictures now?
Right.
Have you all seen them?
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't they amazing?
Yeah.
Means the view of North Beach is, just, yeah.
Flying the drone?
Um, Angel.
Oh, Angel.
Yeah.
Angel that was taking.
Took the pictures.
Yeah, she has, she's a photographer, she also has her drone and, um, so she's very creative, and when I needed help or something, I called, I called her yesterday, and she was out, actually, two days ago, she went out that night, and also last night to do what I asked.
She got some of the carnival last night.
Yeah.
Okay, you have Veronica's funding report to, uh, Richard?
Yeah.
And, Richard, you prepared this, did you?
No, I'm going to give credit to, uh, Dawn for that, uh, I don't have a beach, or a beach report, because we're not yet up to, but, um, here is a slideshow, uh, real quickly, of the Calis Park before, during, and after, and thank you again to Dawn for preparing this. Um, we started about a month ago, um, well, actually, a couple of months ago, Public Works was internal and getting all that old exercise equipment out of there. And, uh, we decided to save the swing set and to add one handicapper into that, studying all of that swing set, but that gives you an idea of what the park looked like, oh, a couple of months ago, so not very pretty. Then this is our crew coming in to start putting together the, uh, the new playground equipment for ages, um, four and up. And I was pretty impressed, I thought, when I saw those poles to the left, I thought, wait, that's not the picture I got, hold on, so. They're getting them in there before they actually straighten them up to the right there. Pretty, uh, pretty detailed, everything is really, um, anchored well, and they, they, they're trying, this took a whole week, Monday through Friday, and they were, um, out, thank God, the good weather. So this is coming together nicely here, you remember the, that area where the exercise equipment was? Again, focusing on the different angles of the project there. And I don't, I wasn't able to get some pictures, but the rubberized surface to the right there is actually, underneath that, there's a, if, uh, go back, okay, there we go, to the right there, you see that's like a, some sort of a foam, but underneath, first, first surface was.
What, Donnie, was it? I don't know, CR six.
CR six, then the foam, and then the rubberized surface, which they mixed with, um, some goo, and then it, it burns up, so.
Yeah, it sets, it's a, it's a tedious, time-consuming process, I'm going to call you in particular, asking about, you know, why is that so expensive? Um, if you watch him do it, you understand that it's.
I was going to start.
Yeah, the same company that are top lot, six, five or six years ago, and I was talking to the, the salesman when he came to do the final inspection, and he said the surface can last up to fifteen years, so the top lot has lasted ten years, and then this one here has a wall, so. There's, um, the entrance, we're walking through the entrance now, from the gate, showing you the new equipment and the surfacing, there's the handicap, uh, piece of equipment there, the back line, pull it up. To the right, uh, forget what we call that chain, that chain recommended we put in, it's pretty cool. And just a different angle, you can see the swing set straight ahead that has the handicap swing there. Nice and clean, we have five benches, two trashcans, and two game tables as well. That's the fencing around the top lot area that Paul, uh, stressed that we should put in there, and I think it turned out like, well, a lot of the residents really do appreciate that. Not Chaster, her kids, but some of the kids, I, those have figured out how to get out there, hey.
All their.
Kind of tricky, I couldn't figure it out, they do, so. And of course, the sculpture was added as well, so.
And that's the sod down there, and it's.
Yeah, Donnie's script put down the sod, yeah, that was pretty, pretty rough looking, before he.
Really?
Cut it up, yeah. And, uh, here we got, uh, two kids on the left and two kids on the right.
If you can't tell, it's Richard and Bud on the top left side.
Yeah, we had to do a safety inspection. It passed.
Good job, Richard. That's, that's a, that's a small, but it's first class parking. Okay, let's see, Veronica's not here, so now's the time for public comment, ma'am?
Yeah, thank you, I'm living well, yeah, I'm, um, well, right near Mickey, and I have, um, everyone here tonight, and it's, it's wonderful to hear, everyone's concerned about our town, how it looks, the feel, how people see the town, how we feel about where we live. And, um, that has everything to do with, my major anxiety attack I'm having, I have to admit, the best anxiety that's happened to me. Um, recently, my neighbor across the street, um, that's right behind you, Andy, yeah, he was telling us that the lady that owns the house is selling. And I have to say, but my heart just went immediately to my throat, because I'm worried for myself and for the town, for the town I'm worried, because it seems like every time one of our, the beach house is just like mine, they get sold, uh, some multimillion dollar corporation comes in, whips it up, and doesn't really care about North Beach. All they care about is putting up some humongous two, three story mega thing that they can rent out for a lot of money, and they don't really care about the appearance, the feel of our town as a family place. And honestly, my fear, I'm going to come right up and tell you, is I am terrified that the people next door to me that their house is going to sell, and the people next door to me over here that their house is going to sell, and one of these big mega mammy corporations is going to dip it up and put up some mongolistic, big two, three story doodah thing up into the sky, and we're going to have our beautiful little beach house that we spent the past almost four years gardening and painting and making cute and pretty, and we just finished putting solar panels on, and we're going to be kind of like, do you ever see those pictures in the newspaper, and these, they'll show big city, and it'll show, you know, John Smith and his house, and there's all these big structures around, John Smith ain't going to move, you know, but then the big people are trying to buy them out, that's how I feel, and I don't want to feel like that, and I want, I want North Beach to, to tell me that I don't have to be afraid that I'm going to be sitting in the tunnel because I can't afford to move out. In my cute little beach house with no sun and no visibility, because these big corporations are going to buy out all my neighbors and own the town, and we're not going to have any just regular old North Beach homeowners left after a while. And you know what I'm saying here, it's like, withdraw, both Carlisle and I fell, born, well, I wasn't born in Maryland, but I was raised in Maryland since I was like one year old. And I moved away, I came back as my son moved to Maryland, he's a church, he's a firefighter, and he lives over in Ridgefield Station. And I came back to Maryland to be near one of my sons, and we just fell in love with being in North Beach again, which I remember when I was a little kid, maybe when I was a. And I'm worried, and I'm afraid, and I don't want to have to sell my house, because I'm afraid that somebody's going to buy out the guy next door and put in some massive thing and be that person in the newspaper sitting there looking at the big old mega, which in the past was next to me. And that seems to be what's going up all over town, and it, it just breaks my heart to see that. This used to be a cute little beach town, and we don't want to have those of us who are still here in our cute little beach houses that are so attractive, and everybody just loves to drive by and see, replaced and driven out, because we're afraid that this is going to happen. I mean, I was literally looking in lot ads today for houses for sale somewhere, because I was, I kept thinking, maybe I better sell now before it happens. What if the guy next door, what if his, his real, his landowner says, yeah, I want to retire, I'm going to, I'm just going to stop, it's going to matter. But that's my fear, and that's why I have these massive anxiety attacks. I don't want to move, I want to be here, but I don't want to be between two big things with no sun. Like, see, we just spent a lot of money on solar panels, my electric bill last month was twenty-seven dollars. So if y'all can tell me something that'll keep me from being. So if y'all could tell me something that'll keep me from being afraid and feeling like I just have to, oh my God, I have to get out before something happens? Because we're not young people, huh? Almost seventy, seventy-five, and it's like, I don't want to be doing this, you know? I want, I came here, I wanted to be here for a long time, so if y'all could help me out with this, I, we, I'm speaking, we would really appreciate it. Because we just love our little house, what we've done with it.
I think one of the nicest new houses I've seen built is, I can't, was Dayton?
Yeah, do you remember, um, Rose and her husband live on that corner? The, the lady that got the, or-
I think that's seven to Dayton.
Yeah, okay, well, the next block over on the left corner, the guy, the guy volunteered to-
Works in the water.
Yeah, his house, that's so cute.
Beautiful house, he's had more people than- Beat out his door, it's all, what a nice place.
Yeah, they had to tear that place down, and they built this really cute house that fits. It's not magic stories or anything, you know what I'm saying? Anyway, that's my-
Well, I, I think we all understand what, what you're feeling.
And I'm worried.
I don't know that I have an answer for you, I mean, what is built is, is permitted in certain zones, and there are limitations on setbacks and height, and, uh, that's part of the North Beach zoning ordinance. And if there's compliance and performance to that ordinance, um, they can build whatever they want if they comply. I don't, you have a better explanation?
I, I would, I, I, I have a feeling I know what house you're talking about, I think we all do.
Next to, uh-
Right on the corner of Fifth and Dayton, that's been recently built, and, um-
Yeah, that's a cute, yeah.
No, 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 no. Tyler, what's the guy, the policeman had that, that place up there at Eighth that's, you know what I'm talking about?
It's right-
It's right next to him.
Yeah, it's right near the senior center and the, and the boys and girls club, it's, it's still under construction.
I don't think so, I, I think you're talking about on Dayton Avenue between Seventh and Eighth, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Well, it's not next to him.
Not on the corner.
Not on the corner.
Yeah, I know, I know exactly, yeah, it's a beautiful house.
Oh, it's-
But I'm looking for somebody to tell me something like, don't worry about moving because North Beach isn't going to allow these people to come into the town and build these massive things and change the whole town and turn it into this big stupid, I mean, if I wanted to live in the suburbs of DC, I would have moved there. You know what I'm saying, I wanted to move here, and I like my house, and I'm worried.
I, I can understand, but, uh, I guess, you know, the, the size of North Beach is not going to change. It hasn't changed in decades.
I'm worried about size.
But the, the land value, I mean, the demand for property in North Beach is increasing as, as it becomes a more attractive destination, uh, and the lots are small. So you, if you pay a lot for a lot, most people are not going to put a one-story building, most people are not, um, on a, a lot like that. I just, I think that's the way we're headed.
So are we saying that I probably should start looking now?
No.
Because I don't want to be seventy-five, eighty years old and have somebody build this big thing next year or the next year. I'm worried, I just don't know what to do right now because I was hoping there's some kind of ordinance or something about maintaining a field for the town. I mean, does the town allow, um, corporations to buy up property, is that okay?
I think these are mostly individuals, like, uh-
Individual, people buying, buying-
Speculators?
No, that, most of them are moving.
I think people are buying it, they move it in, that's-
A lot of people buy, you know, from what I've heard, about the zoning standards. It's 2012, maybe it, because it does, like, mayors said there's certain things for, for them there, which Rick is nice enough to come and talk to us, this is a lab I can serve.
Okay, designer standards.
And, and, you know, forty feet allowed, and maybe, maybe they keep with the feel of the, because how it's said now, it just is like, it conports with being, I'm just, I'm paraphrasing, within a cutey little town feel, but it doesn't say anything about, you know, it says it can be forty feet of its residence or fifty feet of its business, but maybe it's time to, before they all do get filled up like that, uh-
Well, the recourse often is through the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And that, that would have to be changed.
Yeah, if y'all could really seriously consider that now before we turn into this massive town of nothing but townhouses.
I will say one thing-
And the charm is gone.
Most of, most of the houses that, that look to build forty feet are on smaller lots because they're still trying to get square footage.
Yeah.
We haven't had anybody apply that's on larger lots, like the, the house you're talking about that's got the little garage on the side, he's got a large lot.
Yeah.
So he, he's got his, he's got as much square footage as some of these houses you see that are three stories.
Yeah.
But he could do it on-
What?
On one because he has a large lot, so many were buying thirty-five foot wide lot.
That house over there that the customer talked about, that's not a particularly large lot, and that's all one story.
He's still got, he's still got one, he's got like a week.
Well, we, we can argue this.
Yeah.
We understand exactly how you feel, uh, recourse would have to be through the zoning ordinance.
Problem is the design standards create the appearance that there's a theme that's being followed, but they're unenforceable, they're sort of soft. It's all on the, on the other side, as you said, there is a design standard, but it's unenforceable. So either it gets revisited and reinforced and strengthened in a way that it could be enforced, or just let it go.
I will say, like, when I come back to speak to you guys, the, the council doesn't really do that, that's what the zoning board is for. And I've been doing zoning a little over a year now, and we haven't had a single person show up to a zoning board meeting to talk about a brand-new house being built next to them once. The only people that show up for those meetings are the people building the house. And then so no one says anything about those houses until after they're built. The time to do that is when, and if they propose those publicly, is, is when, when that thing's posted saying they're going to apply to this new house to be built, show up, voice your concerns, ask what the design standards are. The, the, the planning board is very specific sometimes, and they make people change their, their, their gutters or the way their window designs are, but if nobody shows up to voice their concerns with the planning board, there, there's not much-
Oh, see, now when we're in it, so we should probably, don't you-
And I, I can talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, that's, okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I haven't really heard what you're saying because the other day, I'm driving down Fifth Street, and when they tore that house down, the southwest corner of Fifth Street, I was, oh my God, you know? It's like an apartment building, it's just huge.
It's four stories if you count the basement.
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's rude.
It's a miniature one-on-one basement.
The one that Larry Hatcher's house was, looks like a freighter, going down today, that's what it looks like. I thought that was bad, but then I saw the one, and it's got a tiny little house next to it. And it's that word, "bad" for those people, because they thought, look at this. I mean, where, while I lived on Third Street, and they sold the house, the lot next to me, they put a very tall, dark gray house up. They went, my son, they went to review, I had to look at the red wall. It was an tractable house, I'll say that, but it's not three stories tall, but one on Fifth. And Fifth, to me, is an accommodation, I cannot believe that it's within the vern or it's-
It's all, it's only-
It's too small, they have minutes.
But what you know more of is, that house is only fourteen inches shorter than the one directly across the street.
Maybe because it's a small lot. Yes, the house should be sized to-
It's almost the same size.
All right, any more public comment? Jay has her hand up. That doesn't actually hurt. Okay, there.
So, um, if you recall, we had a joint venture with the Economic Development Committee and the Riddick Club to, um, memorialize the yard of the month with tiles. So they're done, and you had, um, approved funding for five years worth of tiles to, um, grandfather, um, Ken.
I'm going to break it to you.
So I want you to see the, so the initial difference here was me at five years, right, starting from 2016 to 2014. Um, so here they are from May to, um, October, so I thought you should get a look because I was really, you know, I thought it was-
Who does these?
Um, pottery patch, they do also our, um, house tour tiles, but I want you to see this because we're, I want you guys to, um, see them before we start, we will, uh, retroactively give them to the residents that have, um, been awarded this for the past, um, two years and then-
Do they know they're getting these?
They don't-
They don't know yet?
No, we'll all be contacting them, but I thought they came out early. So I just want you to, to see that, and, um-
I kind of lobby for it, but Randy was the one who said, just five years.
Well, you know, we're seeing, going, should we do two years or should we do one? It's your five.
No, it doesn't seem to be doing it.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put these up, but put them out, you're messing up the plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, I want the rest of staff to see.
Nice work, Jen.
Nice job.
Speaking, can I, can I just do a shout-out to EDC as well? Hopefully, everybody knows the banners along Chesapeake, if you remember, you guys at EDC designed the ones that are up there now. They're, they're going along Chesapeake, green with a little bicycle, the North Beach.
More public comment? Jay?
A couple of them. See, I think if this, March, something, Donny can probably help me on that one we had deployed. It was two days that we had deployed that. The first day, the ninth street blew. The second day, the water actually came around the burn, went into the storm drain behind Grant's house, and the pumps actually pumped it all back. So it came in three and a half feet that, the, the second day, and the pumps, you clean the pumps, you run up there that morning and clean it up, and they, they, you know? But we didn't have waves coming over the wall, right, and people talking about the water, so anyway, just, who knows?
Thank the board's work.
Yeah, I was, I was there, we were working, when was that, when you called me and you'd come around the burn? So the last two or three weeks of coming around the burn again, and out the road, out the road, you just go right around, right down, you know, behind all those houses.
And it, and it couldn't keep up that day because the water was coming over the wall, too. But the next day, we didn't have the wave action, so. The other thing was, when the state, when is the state going to come and talk about the street, the rezoning street? It's a-
That's what. They were here a month or two ago.
Right, but they said they were going to come back.
We don't have the, uh, probably call or talk to them.
Okay, I would just like to-
You'll know, you'll know.
Okay, at one time, they, remember we talked about it, it's been great, uh, and we talked about on the west side, we made the sidewalk with a curb that could give us an additional six inches or so to keep it from coming across the street or by this main property.
Yeah, we're talking about that one.
Okay, that's-
Don't take all that into consideration, yeah, that was a concern, it'll come around from that side.
Right, right, yeah, and Mr. Ball, great guy, has helped me a lot with my brother-in-law, his staff, what was it?
Thank you. We thank a lot of him.
That's good, they put up the signs, remember we talked about signs and hours and when the avenues would be open, they did that, it was perfect. People are down there, they come and say, when was the five minutes?
We thank a lot of him, too.
So, anyway, I think it's, I have this one here. Of course, Donny's crew is great.
The whole staff is great in this town. Okay, we're going on to, uh, no-business items, ordinance and resolutions, we need an introduction. First of the ordinance to amend FY 2018.
I introduce that, this will be somebody, you know, third, second, and two, we introduce it.
Okay, moving on to ordinance dash eighteen oh three, the budget, general funds, sewer capital for, uh, 2019.
I introduce that, also, eighteen dash oh three.
I think, when, I know you want to discuss it, this does nothing but introduce it.
Right, exactly, you want to discuss items now?
Well, you can, or we can, we can actually walk through them.
If we can do that, that's fine.
When we actually approve it, approve it, that's what we're going to change.
Yeah.
And then I think work session.
We do a work, yeah, I just want to make sure.
Oh, we have to approve this ordinance at a work session to meet our time for-
Yeah.
Twenty, we have to approve it at our, our work session meeting.
So as long as, if we can-
Okay, well, let's-
Fill the time to discuss a couple of things beforehand.
So you can discuss it in advance, you have to discuss it prior to passing it at the work session.
I know, if we want to make a change, it's a little too dangerous.
We have to pass the work session.
You can call that a special town council meeting. Yeah, that's correct.
We call it a special town council meeting?
Yes, fill up that bridge later.
Okay, what, what's the date?
So, should we maybe spend a few minutes now? I mean, I'm just worried, there's things that people, where we have kind of-
Go ahead, Charlie.
Well, I, I, just a couple, I think hopefully, one is quick, one thing I wanted to bring up, I know we don't have, um, capital improvement projects. We've done a lot, obviously, um, this year, but just thinking about a couple of things that, and Paul, maybe you can speak to it a little bit. One thing that's been brought to our attention is on Atlantic Avenue, um, the drainage issue there, the way that the road is sloped. I just want to make sure that, not specifically the budget, I tried to get on the radar, I think that's an important thing that we, that we really get some designs out.
I did a survey on it, um, we did the fluff firm, um, and, you know, Donny and I took around some ideas, we haven't really come up with a game plan yet, but, you know, we could, if you want to conclude something.
Donny, didn't we discuss this, this matter extending the storm?
Yeah, talk about the, what the easiest, and the, I think the youngest thing was put a drainage at the lowest spot. I think that everybody, you have to go, that's how it's counted, because that's the lowest spot, and that would kind of tie into it, exist.
Rather than resloping the road.
Right, and that would be a great sidewalk, maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's doable to put a drainage there, and how much money are we talking about, roughly?
Five, six, seven, eight thousand, I mean, it's not a huge investment.
Doesn't have to be a capital problem.
That could always be, we need maintenance, but that's not a dinner, it's-
So we could kind of put a note for that, and make that happen?
Yeah, do that.
Um, well, I'll remind that one, you know, I'm thinking with, with the state getting ready to raise that highway, some of those companies, they just go away on their own anyway.
Yeah, that's not going to help that. All right, so I can, if people on Atlantic tell me, so we can make that happen, okay? All right, that, that was quick, and then I think the other thing, a couple of us, I know Paul was curious, to also talk a little bit about the park ranger, um, position, I mean, I'm not opposed to the position, I'm just kind of curious, I want to make sure we're being responsible with this. I have a couple of questions, like in terms of baseline, Donny, I know we have our new landscape, um, gardener, right? It's easy to remember, gardener. So in terms of, I mean, what are the, some of the things maybe they're doing? I just want to make sure we're educated in terms of our baseline, of are they doing some of the things that maybe a park ranger would do already?
Gardener, as far as what they, I can tell you their contract, you know, I can tell you, but they, they used to come down in the spring, um, sometime in March, June, and April, and they prep all the beds on the four block there for, uh, like, town day. That's kind of their open thing, their contract starts to do that, then they go through town, get all the areas that are possible, some authorities, Three Wells, Cowlsport, and Overport, they do a good, uh, you know, bring out two crews, probably, call fifteen guys and knock it out about three days. So they do a major weeding, trimming, check everything kind of out, mull, soil areas, except for the fire, because they've gone through the four blocks around there. They kind of melt, run them in and out. And after that, um, they go, I mean, once a week, they do the weeding, and they got a pretty small crew, then like three or four guys, just keep up on a weekly basis. They go come out, do the weed, and they have a shift in charge of any techs there every day. So we usually have to get them all Wednesday, Thursday, so it's good for a weekend. So they come out, you know, check everything out, and then they're on the farm every day. And then once a month, him himself comes out and makes sure they're doing their job, and then, you know, guys, we have Kelly. Kelly's did a numeric contract for a while, now they've seen it for, maybe two years, and if they're, you know, if they're a contractor, they're doing a good job, so. I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
They're doing over, they're doing overlook.
Two Overport, two, some around Scourge, two Cowlsport, they do three. Do Overland Park, do Summer Garden, do Cowlsport, they do Three Wells, and all the big properties, you see them now, they're weeding, branching out, and then their contract, they fertilize like once a month. But they have issues, like maybe to replace a tree. This week, just one example, we said we got some insects, we put, maybe do an insect treatment, they sent me a price, that was gonna cost about dollars, you know, right, like, yeah, check the joint, stick it in, do it, and give them a signed corporate contract. That's basically, you know, kind of their contract. We cut all the grass, we do, we do grass, so, but they, obviously.
So they have a, ex, plant, obviously, expertise to notice and if like something is dying or, so they have that aspect.
Yeah, they'll trim, like they, you know, a couple, you know, they're trying to say that plant, if you want to replace this, do whatever.
Well, I think they want to have a, they give us a written recording. Well, I'm happy, and, because I, I think they can, they can do what we're asking for. And they will also do Walton Beach to, and, and, and. We took pictures of it, well, we got pictures of it, of, of the condition of it. So we walked everything, we looked at it. They do, I mean, that's what they do. So they do a little bit more, I, I mean, so when their crew comes out and they're working, they're looking at the plants, looking at the trees. If they come across any issues, their first thing to do is take a picture of it and they send it back to Jim. And then Jim then reaches out to Donnie. Jim's out there about twice a month, mentally, to over top that.
Right, right.
But they're already, they're already walking these parks, looking at these parks, they're already, that's what they do.
And I understand what you're saying about Walton Beach. What I worry, it's not just the plants, it's the integrity of the living shoreline and the berm and erosion and.
We walked it, we can see any of that.
I know, but there may be things that we don't know that we're looking for.
Right, but I mean.
In terms of the living shoreline.
Yeah, yeah, the living shoreline, you know, basically, guys, we have four different things. We have living shoreline and the berm, which is one thing. That is a level of expertise that's way over everybody here, so maybe Paul. Well, I mean, you're an engineer, we know about engineers. Um, we, we have Overlook Park and, and Summer Garden, Summer Garden, Third Street, which are two of the parks, and we have a playground, which is a playground. And each one of those is a little bit different of what you're looking for in a playground. You know, in a playground, you're looking at something else, you're looking at broken chains and the insect chains and you're taking the closer degree of the plants. It, it overlook and, and, Third Street, you're looking at the plants because those are gardens, if you know. And then with, with the living shoreline and the berm, that's, that's a whole nother animal. That's entirely different. We've got engineering integrity and, and, you know, if somebody walked out onto the, under, on the breakwater, they had turned the rocks off, which has happened.
I know, things are roving, it's been undermined.
You know, we're looking at two or three different skill sets, and two probably different skill sets there, maybe three.
Well, I know, so Gene did give Donnie a preliminary, I guess he was asking, you had asked for information about the maintenance, because that was something that came up at our last meeting, maintenance, or Walton Beach and the berm. I mean, he said it was like, it was like ten thousand dollars.
Just a bit.
A year, yeah, he's coming out, I guess eleven months out of the year to look and then make, you know, any kind of, a little bit of a report. This is high to me, it's over a thousand dollars a visit. So maybe we can talk more about that. But I do, yeah, I think, I think we do have to have Walton Beach, the living shoreline and that on the table. And that's good information, Mike. But then the other piece of it, you know, Mayor, I think you, you brought up too, you know, we, we lost our park ranger. So it was also the, just being there and walking and noticing, and a lot of things that he caught, so that's a different sort of aspect. And you and I were chatting a little bit, like, do we need sort of maybe some groundskeeper things? I'm just trying to identify the gaps.
One of the major problems, I think, we got, with Mrs. Lewis, we get a person that can track down the people that are using that park more than, you know, we got our grounds guys there, we do the grounds maintenance, we got our herd on the grass stuff, but we need somebody there to fill the void of keeping the.
The park, rolling, keeping it clean, keeping the people from stepping in. Is there a void here? Is that like Richard's?
No. That would place.
To a point.
Oh, so you missed there, obviously.
Never forget that.
I mean, I was thinking about that position.
That's still doing it, let someone do it in that house.
What are you?
I was thinking about the position, and if we had a worker that person, I mean, I could always use that. If you get a person there to work and whatever, and clean up and do so, get it fast, you could always use somebody.
Richard, you have, you commented last time about the person that you put up there on the corner, that third, I guess on weekends in the summer, and also kind of looked over to the park to see what's going on, but that's kind of a, sometimes they're there, sometimes they aren't. They're not, certainly not gonna, you know, catch a lot of what goes on in there. And I can see it because the park is getting more use all the time. And young people, who didn't do things that young people do. They throw, they pick up rocks and they throw them.
So he's a traffic control person though, Richard. Many days had somebody doing traffic control, somebody in the park itself, you had two people.
When I could, I would, when I could, I would actually have a person on Third Street and someone in the park if I had an extra person at the same time, but that wasn't always the case.
I guess that's what I'm wondering, if we identify, you know, if we can justify or is it a person that, so you're saying, Richard, it could be helpful to have someone who, someone who's a little bit of a park ranger, someone who's a little bit of core, fills gaps, I mean, if it's, you know, if it's needed, I just want to make sure that.
I think just from the amount of people who came into Cowlsport, since we did playground through, that's who we come there, and then there, they like, with the, that's a lot of money spent there, but that's what, that's what we kind of have to look at too, because at first I was kind of offended by, we not, didn't have a plan or wouldn't take care of works, we don't create the works, so they care a lot about them, you know? But the way, with the volume of people, because you are so nice, I think we need more of a policing type person or, you know, they can help with maintenance and all, they have difficulty to do than.
Is that what it rains?
Like their expertise, because I kept hearing that expertise.
Put it in your form and.
I kept hearing that expertise person, but I think we have the experts like Paul, that's his person that can look at some, maybe damage in Walton Beach or, it'd be easier contract than not, if you had a day-to-day person, definitely people like.
Walton Beach, you have to keep separate handles.
Yeah, Walton Beach is kind of different, I don't see people running there, it does kind of roll enough now to where you're not gonna have much traffic, but you have to do.
No.
Well, how about, I don't forget about the educational aspect of a park ranger. We have all this variety, like you were saying, of, of parks, from the living shoreline to the playground. And it's not just the policing, and I know that's important because we want to keep them nice, now that we've spent all of these resources, people and money on them, but there's an educational aspect that I see the park ranger doing. That, and no offense to everyone that's keeping them nice, and, you know, Richard's staff who works at Gering Hall, Donnie works very hard, but, you know, we're not just talking pulling the weeds out of the ground and keeping it watered, but I, I see the park ranger as being a resource, who's a subject matter expert in environmental, uh, meeting environment, being there to, um, in the ideal scenario to, to walk around and, and also hold classes, walk, you know, have a guided tour through, um, to the weapons, um, area. And, you know, it's just another thing that they can provide to our community so that, would they have on a uniform to be able to lead, to have some presence? Sure, you know, as an authority presence, that's great, but, um, you know, they wouldn't be the ones leading either, just like, you know, other master advisors, first to educate, not going to pull weeds, often, a lot of weeds. Anyway, but, you know, I see that, that's a role that they could provide, and I just don't want you to forget about that, that it's not just the policing and the physical maintenance, but combine that with how they could grow education to our community in all those areas. Another piece of concern.
Okay, thank you, Denver. We're not gonna solve it tonight. Obviously, there's mixed opinions on it and we have a month to come to some consensus on it, so be prepared to do that on June seventh, is that?
June seventh.
June seventh, okay, thank you. Randy, your report?
Okay, I'd like to thank all the volunteers that came to play at ten. We do have the dedication mark, Cowlsport, eleven o'clock. And I wanted to tell everybody that there's a new speed camera up at Jesus of the Shepherd now.
And hey, Susan, I didn't mean to interrupt you when you said that, what Ron Payne told you about that. But that's exactly, that's exactly my beef. There's so much misinformation out there, misleading information and confusion about it, that the average person who's subjected to these fines doesn't know what the, what the sport is.
Well, that's me, we're the director of the patrol.
Yeah, I know. I know, but I, I had looked at the law, so.
I see you just say law, you can, and now it's actually moving forward.
And everybody have a nice friend.
So what do you? Okay, Dan, you're up.
Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming out. And also I'd like to thank my fellow council people for the support you gave me, for this past year of being president of SMMA. I really appreciate your attendance and your participation.
You did a great job, Jane. North Beach doesn't have to deal with that for five years.
Yeah, but, you know, just speaking, you take your time, we'll probably have to fill in for you.
Oh, you didn't hear that. Is that it, Jane?
Yes.
Good call.
Thank you and have a good night.
We, we, we beat it all up, but thank you so much for coming and we look forward to continuing conversations. Thank you.
It's great to see everyone. Thanks for sticking out to the end. Thanks for your positive comments, okay? And I just want to thank the EDC as well, Deborah and all the work that you're doing, House and Guard, and everybody, all the other volunteers. Thanks so much.
Ricky?
Anything else that can say? Just that first movie is on Saturday, May nineteenth, it's Coco.
Okay.
Mayor, county, county council in regards to the year in schedule.
Sure.
Do such a bad day, special town council meeting, just the following week, you know, all the.
Right, that's a good point.
So that will be our only meeting.
Good point. Uh, I would call your attention to the date under meetings and events of the planning commission meeting on May twenty-fourth. My understanding that Mr. Russo is going to be making a presentation to the planning commission that evening regarding the small, soon to be, I think, Italian restaurant